Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. If anybody has any updates with the score of the Tiger game, feel free.
Zero, zero.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Brison.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, we're all here. First thing we have is a couple of public hearings. Anyone have a problem we can bind it to?
Nope.
I do not.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to open the public hearing for aquatic management for Bayview Shores and aquatic management for Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth Drive, and Phillips Drive at 601.
Support. Okay, motion support for open up public hearing for both of them. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. I'll now open up a public hearing. If anybody has anything to say about the special assessments for Bayview Shores or the special assessment for Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth, and Phil- Phillips, uh, roads, you can come on up and say what you wish. No public comments? Once, twice, three times? I'll entertain a motion to close it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for aquatic management Bayview Shores, aquatic management Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth Drive, and Phillips Drive at 602.
Support. Okay, motion support. Any discussion?
Uh, just a brief. Uh, Bayview, Bayview Shor- Shores went in at seventy-nine percent favorable.
Yep.
And Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth, and Phillips Drive came in at eighty-two percent.
Yep.
So, pretty strong numbers.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And next we have bills payable. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Um, under Fire Department, Engine One, Engine Two, service, oil and filter, fifteen hundred dollars approximately for, for Engine One, thirteen hundred for Engine Two. What is that?
Chief D.
PM maintenance for the year.
What is that?
It's PM maintenance, preventive maintenance. They get oil changes done yearly.
Okay, so is that thirteen hundred bucks for an oil change?
That's oil change and safety inspection.
Okay.
For the year or just one?
It's for the whole year.
Okay.
And who does that, chief?
West George.
West George. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I wanted to ask about the hundred and nine dollar uniform allowance. Is this for cargo shorts at scoreboard north of the buildings and grounds?
We know.
Hundred and nine dollars. Uniform or clothing?
What, what?
It's, um, it's under, it's Department 265, building and grounds.
That's for one of the office administrative staff?
Oh, okay. So is it just cargo shorts or just clothing or it's not, it's not embroidered?
Why would you say cargo shorts?
I don't know. Trying to figure out what's a hundred and nine dollars.
The invoice says decorated apparel.
Okay. And then for McDonald's and the police department, five eighty-six. That's field gear. Is that his whole uniform? On the two oh seven police department?
Don't our uniform allowance officers, don't they have an allowance of a thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
About six hundred, so it's, it's probably his.
So they're well within their annual budget.
It has to be approved by the chief, too.
And it's approved by the chief?
Okay. Now we need to look it up then, Kristi. How about the capital outlay improvement on the, for the five thousand high-tech system service, the monthly cloud backup? Is that just for the police and not the administrative computers?
Which fund are you under?
Uh, it's capital outlay improvement, um, over five thousand dollars.
For which fund?
Which fund?
Uh, let me see. I didn't write the fund down. Uh, it's over five thousand.
Oh, just please.
Just please. But we do, I just wanted to make sure we do it for the administrative, too, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I, I just thought, well, I thought they would all be together. Right? Okay, that was all I had.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Maureen Bory. Yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next Supervisor's report. I've been dealing with a lot of building, blight, and drainage issues past couple of weeks. Um, still finishing up the scrap tire grant for next year. Um, the Blue Bill Bridge replacement, cement was poured on the deck. The contractor switched the traffic from the temporary bridge to the main bridge. It's one lane. And, uh, that, they did that so they can remove the temporary bridge. And, um, they're, uh, gonna be installing the permanent handrails and do restoration and, uh, it's a couple of weeks from getting wrapped up, so they're going, they're doing well on it. Uh, the playscapes that were donated to Brown's Field scheduled for installation this next week, um, I gotta get with them to find out exactly when they're gonna be there. Uh, we did receive a complaint about possible water contamination in the Algonquin sand pit. It's brought forward, but even before receiving the complaint, we, we did, the township called Eagle for an investigation and, uh, which they did. And, uh, for both the landfill and the sand pit. And, uh, after the, uh, investigation, Eagle sent the township a letter that the landfill has high le- levels of TCE metals in the soil and VO has volatile organic compound in the landfill's groundwater. Um, and then Eagle did give the owner of the landfill things they have to comply with. Uh, there was like four or five things on there. They have to, oh, I think, when was it? October fifteenth to do that. Um, and the township does have a, a meeting with Eagle this next week to review the situation and to see it with, you know, and they're gonna explain the findings more and how it's gonna affect us. Um, we're, we're busy quoting our health insurance. Uh, as a reminder, we've been buying a high deductible, high deductible policies that saves us money on a premium and we're, we're basically self-insured for a portion of the deductibles. This has been a, with the, us, the money savings and us paying a portion of the qualifying deductibles, this process has been saving the township about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, so it's pretty substantial. So we're out trying to get different quotes on that right now. Uh, they started a ditching project. I haven't been there today, um, on, um, LaCroy over by the fire hall on the island. And, uh, the county did take care of the drain that was a little bit of a concern next to the new Harson's Island welcome sign. Um, pickleball league starts Thursday, this is going, but if anyone wants to join, they're more than welcome. They have a, Thursday's Women's League is from five to eight. And then Tuesdays, they have a beginners' class from six to seven on Tuesday. They're all free, or the, the beginners is free. And then afterwards, it's beginners' open play from seven o'clock on. Uh, Fall Clean Up was this past, uh, weekend, the twenty-first and twenty-second of September, two weeks ago. It was very busy, uh, successful. We got four large garbage trucks full of stuff and I think it was six containers fill. And we also filled a container full of tires. So a lot of tires. We have the police, uh, the Clay Township Police Hunter Safety Class. It's gonna be held October twenty-second to the twenty-fourth. It's full. We have over fifty people that are enrolled and thank the, the police, uh, police for doing that. A lot of, it's all volunteer time. And we used to, we always incorporate some DNR officers and other people to make it as very successful class. Uh, Sturgeon, the North Channel Sturgeon Classic, the Sturgeon Fishing Fest, I call it, is a Saturday, October twelfth. I changed it up. Fishing hours are from nine AM till five PM. It used to be at night. The award ceremony will occur at six thirty PM in the park and the Sturgeon Festival, in the Sturgeon Festival Beer Tent that's in the park. From noon to four, we got all kinds of kids' games, a Sturgeon painting contest, dog costume contest, and, uh, from five to ten, we have a corner hole tournament going on in the beer tent. And at, um, eight to twelve, we have entertainment. The Go-Wees are gonna be playing there from eight to twelve. That's all I have. So moving right along. Uh, public comments? Do I have any public comments? Come on up and go ahead.
Brian Klingenberg, nine zero three two Field Road. So when I built my house in Clay Township, I followed every ordinance that was advised to me. Now, Artie has taken a personal vendetta against me and my family, you and Richard Hobig. You devalued my property. You put pigs and cows within fifteen feet of my property land. He has no permit for this, nor will he ever be allowed to have a permit for this because his house does not apply. Neither does his property. One is industrial, one is residential. Constantly, he's driving heavy equipment from the residential to the industrial in front of my house. It shakes my whole house. Artie, I don't understand why you cannot make him follow any ordinances.
Public comments? Thank you.
Yeah. That's all you ever got to say?
Well, actually, M, M DART is, uh, controlling all the farming aspect of it and they, they, they did inspect it. They have more, uh, regulation than we do.
Artie.
So.
You are the colleague.
Thank you. Next comment, please?
Pam Murdis, eight oh one twenty-one Colony. I'm going to just read from my paper so I don't ramble on out of courtesy to the board and to our citizens. So, Maureen, I know that you love social media, but a duty of a trustee is to manage adversity and hostility effectively. Your post and your actions have actually created adversity and hostility at times. For instance, you recently lied in one of your posts when you stated that two men who wouldn't allow you to enter a private event grabs you and hurt your arm. You posted this despite the fact that there were multiple witnesses there who were willing to testify under oath in a court of law that this never happened. You identified yourself as a trustee at that event and said that you needed to be there in order to report to the community. You left the event, but stayed outside, Maureen, taking pictures of those going in and out of the building. That is unethical and a form of voter intimidation, in my opinion. Recently, you posted on social media about your concerns with the sand pit property on Fruit Road. The job of the trustee is to vote on issues before the board, and on this issue, you voted to allow the special land use for that property, the same property that you are now complaining about. As a trustee, do you think that you have jurisdiction over the Michigan Department of Agriculture, Eagle, and our Building Department? The fact is, Maureen, you don't. And you should know that, so if you ask the board, why aren't we doing something about this? It's because the other government agencies who do have jurisdictions are dealing with this. The Michigan Right to Farm Act was enacted in nineteen eighty-one to protest, to protect farmers from nuisance lawsuits. The state statute authorizes the Michigan Commission of Agriculture to develop and adopt generally accepted agriculture and management practices for farms and farm operations in Michigan. Although I'm sure that I would be upset if, if I was living next to something like that, perhaps, um, I do feel confident that the proper agencies are looking into this and will deal with it accordingly. If the township interferes with this when you don't have jurisdiction to do so, and if you are again posting untruths on social media, you could once again be causing the township to be faced with a lawsuit. Michigan law imposes some clear standards of conduct for township official, officials, some of them having civil or criminal consequences. As a trustee, you have a fiduciary duty owed to all members of the public, including a duty of loyalty and a duty of care in order to avoid a conflict of interest. A conflict of interest, according to the Attorney General, arises when, and I'll quote, "The personal interests of a public official places him in a position where he cannot execute his public duties without affecting his private interests, thus denying the public the fair, impartial, and objective judgment to which it's entitled." Maureen, when you voted to allow the special land use for that property on Fruit Road, it has been stated that you were in a personal relationship with the owner. If that is true...
Three minutes.
Then you did not recuse yourself from voting.
We haven't done the three minutes forever.
Then...
You've told people.
You breached your fiduciary duty.
Artie, we're ready.
Three minutes. It's over.
You breached your fiduciary duty to the public. It has also been reported that you are no longer in a relationship with the owner of said property. This could appear as you are targeting the individual due to your previous relationship and therefore you should recuse yourself from, if there are any further voting on this issue, for the good of the township, I hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
The true gentleman is the man whose conduct proceeds from goodwill and an acute sense of propriety and whose self-control is equal to all emergencies, who does not make the poor man conscious of his poverty, the obscure man of his obscurity, or any man of his inferiority or deformity, who is himself humbled and necessity compels him to humble another, a man who does not flatter wealth, cringe before power, or boast of his own possessions or achievements, who speaks with frankness but always with sincerity and sympathy, whose deed follows his word, who thinks of the rights and feelings of others rather than his own, and who appears well in any company, a man with whom honor is sacred and virtue safe. My father, Jerry Galca, is a good man. I implore the denizens of Clay Township to consider voting for him and his constituents this November fifth. This township needs to be saved both financially and the waste needs to be negated, not abated. I yield my time.
Sir, your name and address, please? Your name and address.
Jerry Galca, nine 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 six, North River Road, Clay Township.
Thank you.
I yield my time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Sally Reagan from seven two eight five Flamingo Street. I'm here with no complaints at all. I just wanted to thank the current board, in particular Artie, Kristi, and Cindy, for all the hard work that you do and all the great results that you give to our township. Uh, my husband and I moved here about eighteen years ago. I thought it was a great place to live, but I think the improvements that have happened, both visually, uh, in terms of things that all the, um, people who live here can enjoy, and the things that have happened internally in terms of the way the township is managed are just phenomenal. And who knows what's gonna happen in November, but I hope to see you all sitting here next year.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Still zero, zero.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Miller, seven three one one B Lane. On September eighteenth, one of the write-in supporters posted my personal property tax information on Nextdoor. I didn't think too much about it at the time. I really didn't care. It's public information. Anybody that knows how to look for it can find it. So I, uh, I didn't really think too much about it after that. I thought it was kinda low, but okay. But then a couple of days later, another one of the write-in supporters decided to take that screenshot and post it on Facebook and got even wider dissemination of my property tax information. Again, I thought that was kinda low, but the admins on that page did happen to take it down rather quickly, but it still got out there. Then I go out to my mailbox and I get this envelope, no return address, with a tampon in it. Real funny joke, right? Yeah, I didn't think so. Now what else is gonna come next? You know, uh, I thought, okay, that's the end of it. Funny prank. All right. Then, uh, I was standing outside of the, uh, the meeting hall here on September twenty-fifth after the joint meeting with two other people, and someone approached from behind us, a man, and started verbally attacking us and yelling insults at us. And he was very aggressive and he had a, a very aggressive demeanor to him. I don't know who this man was. Never seen him before. And I thought, okay, here we go. But it didn't stop there. The next night, I went to the meet the candidates event. And, uh, as I was leaving with two other people, Artie was, uh, reaching out to us and said, "Thanks for coming." And before I could even respond to him, the same man starts verbally attacking us and yelling comments and insults at us again. And, uh, Artie, I would like you to know, I did, uh, uh, I did wanna acknowledge the fact, thank you for, for thanking us for coming. That was appreciated. But again, that wasn't quite the end either. Now, we're getting these flyers in the ma- in the mail with name-calling. We've resorted to name-calling now. Uh, the shyster insurance agent, the disgraced, uh, judge, and, uh, very prominently dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, with the appearance that this just happened three years ago, when in fact these incidents were from two thousand nine and two thousand thirteen. Now, on social media, Artie has claimed no knowledge of where this came from. It comes from a super PAC in Lansing. However, Artie is also very often let us know about all of his, uh, contacts that he's gotten in Lansing with senators and representatives and all these good contacts to be able to get things done. And I'd like to also point out that there were a couple of other articles. One was about the, uh, the, uh, Champion Fair Auto Ferry when they were having problems with the, uh, Michigan Public Service Commission in two thousand fifteen. If you look up that article, it says updated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Huh, same date. If you look up, uh, the, when Champion Auto Ferry crashed into the docks, two thousand nineteen, again, updated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, it appears that the newspapers regularly go through and they check to see if there's any updates. I feel like this is a misrepresentation. It's been addressed over the last three months that these are investigations that were never charges made and it continues to keep coming out. Now, in regards to, uh, your, your, your representation that you know nothing about this, you tell us, you know, that, that you have all these good relationships. I know that your brother hosted a fundraiser for Senator Lawers.
That was not true.
The, uh, Senator Lawers then introduced a bill, uh, to, uh, change the oversight on the ferry fees so that now the Michigan State Police oversee any time there's a rate, uh, a rate increase. Senator Hurdle has introduced a bill to, uh, help us get a second DDA for Harson's Island. Representative Jay DeBoyer was a former trustee here, supervisor here in Clay, and also the, uh, St. Clair County Clerk. So you have lots of relationships in Lansing. So for you to say that you know nothing about this having been put out, I feel is disingenuous at the very least and borderline lying, because I think you do know who it came from. All right? And I find, I, in addition, I've been looking for board meetings. There's two board meetings in August that have never been posted. The September twenty-fifth joint board meeting still hasn't been posted. So, um, you know, I mean, we, we still have, we still have a township to run besides campaigning. Anyways, I find all of these behaviors just rude, disrespectful, immature, and very unprofessional. All these things that are happening, people attacking, you know, when is this gonna end? Is it gonna take one of us getting hurt or our property being damaged? I, I, I'm nervous. I'm nervous, living alone in my house now, that somebody's gonna come to my house and, and, um, let the air out of my tires or, or something else. What's gonna happen next? We, we, this division between us has got to stop. We've, for decades, we've had an issue with division between the island and the mainlanders. And now this division is even worse. People are verbally attacking each other, calling each other names. It's gotta come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, please? Any more comments? Okay, hearing done. Uh, move right along to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. The minutes of board meeting of nine sixteen twenty-four. Reports of board approved on nine sixteen in between meetings and September payroll.
Support. Motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, under, uh, new business, we have resolution twenty twenty-four.
We still have unfinished business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um...
I don't think there's an update, but I left it down there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we have unfinished business, uh, determination of playscape change order, uh, charge. Yeah, we submitted that for, uh, payment, uh, and I haven't heard back from the DNR, so... Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, new business, resolution...
I'm sorry. Are, are we gonna roll this to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just gonna carry this over?
Yep.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-one E, Bayview Shores Aquatic Management. We have a resolutions, no, just one resolution for us?
Yep, this is the resolution confirming the special assessment rule, setting the payment of two seventy-one per front foot and levied on the December tax bill.
Right.
A motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one E for Bayview Shores Aquatic Management.
Support. Motion support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we have, um, resolution for the Anchor Bay, Farnsworth, and Phillips Drive. Special assessment to set, ones to set the district in cost and the ones to set a public hearing for November fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five C, setting the district in cost. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five D, setting a second public hearing November fourth.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have to appoint counsel Christine Anderson for the Funky versus Clay. What this is, it's over a canal, but it's kind of like abandonment of a road. There's no financial thing for the township. And I asked our insurance company if their counsel would handle this, and they said, because there's no financial gain or loss or anything on that, they wouldn't. But this is just so, Chris, they have to do this in front of a circuit court. And so, this is just so Christine Anderson will make sure it's done right and filed correctly.
Now, this is basically for declaring ownership.
Yes.
And going back and doing title research, if anybody's standing out there with a bad title or whatever.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So we just want to appoint her to handle this for Clay. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint counsel Christine Anderson in the, is it Funky?
I believe so.
In the Funky versus Clay case.
Motion support. Any discussion?
It had to go to a lawsuit. It couldn't just be...
Yeah, it has to go to the circuit court. Same with the road.
What is it over? Is it over land? Is she disputing?
They just want to take, they want to take ownership over a canal that's public.
The whole canal? The whole canal.
Yeah, where they live.
So this is the official procedure. It has to go through.
Yep, has to go through a circuit court.
Right.
It's the only way.
And the public owns it now, and we're looking to give it to them.
Yeah. Or they're looking to take, for it to be abandoned. Okay.
At the end of it, it's going to not belong to anybody.
Right.
Well, that's it.
Yeah.
Or it could be split. The piece of property in question is what, 27 linear feet?
Yes, 27 feet.
Right? And there's neighboring properties on each end of it. I think that the crux of it, from what I'm gathering after talking to fellow board members and assessors, both here and also, I think there's some level of involvement at the county level, is that they don't have the authority to split this piece of property. So, even if they said yes, it wouldn't particularly be a legal binding decision. So, what we're trying to do by appointing Christine Anderson is take the appropriate matter at hand, put it in the attorney's hand, which then becomes a legally binding decision, whatever the decision is reached. It takes, it's higher than our authority.
Yes.
Higher than our assessor's authority.
Mm-hmm.
It's higher than the county assessor's authority, correct?
Yep.
Make sure it's fair.
Is Jerry Lawton here? Did I summarize that correctly? Jerry? Is there a little more to it than that?
Yeah, so basically, it's not a canal right now. There's no water. It was planted as a canal.
Right.
But it's complete roadway now. There's just an encroachment that has existed for a very, very long time. They're trying to clean this up, basically, because the house encroaches on the previous canal, but it's not a canal.
But it's not.
It was just planted.
Is this going to be resolved? It will be resolved through the court.
Through circuit court.
But Jerry, so it's not and never was county right of way, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have a motion of support to appoint Christine Anderson to handle this case for Clay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our police school resource officer agreement. It's basically the same that we have been doing in the past. It's a three-year contract, but we did change, before we put in a flat fee, what the charges would be, but now, it basically says we're going to split it half and half.
With who?
With the school. I brought it up in the past to get Elginak and IRA to help pitch in, because they have residents or people in the school district that attend Elginak schools too, but I didn't have any luck of getting that done, and I want to see a resource. It's very important we have a resource officer in the school. So I will continue to do that, but this is a contract between Elginak and the school, or Clay Township and the school.
Clay Township and the school, right? To support the resource officer.
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the police school resource officer agreement, 2024 through 2027.
Support. Okay. Any motion of support? Any discussion?
Can you explain the salary we're going to pay 50/50 SE? $59,565, $564. Is that 50% of the annual salary, or what?
Is 50% of the cost for the officer in there?
For the three years, or just for one year?
Well, every year.
Right. So he's giving about 120 grand a year.
Absolutely not. The cost of the officer includes all the costs, the overhead of the officer, not just his benefits.
Oh, okay, everything, okay. I just wanted to know what that was.
It's turned a fully loaded wage.
Okay. So the car, his benefits and everything. Alright.
Okay, any more questions?
Well, I just think by approving this, we had a brief discussion on this earlier, right? And we think roughly somewhere between 20 and 25% of the Elginak student high school body, or the student population, belongs to either Clay or IRA, right?
You mean Elginak or IRA?
Elginak or IRA, I'm sorry. So, this doesn't negate the fact that we can still try and knock on that door. We can still petition Rocky Gillis and Denise and perhaps Jim Enders as well down at IRA, right? So this doesn't negate that fact, but this does allow us to continue the resource officer at a current capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of an easy one, right?
Alright.
And we decide together on who the officer is, between the school and us?
The police does.
Okay.
The police decides.
Chief Coach, great.
That's Officer Verhado.
Right now, yep.
Yeah, do you know him? Great guy.
Great guy.
Yeah, he's been involved with the school for a number of years.
He's probably been on our force for 10.
And more importantly, I think he really likes his job.
Yeah, I've seen him over at school, but I don't know him personally.
Thank you.
Okay.
He's a great officer.
Alright, roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. Okay, next, we have a quote for Zimmer Roofing and Construction for gutter replacement on the building here. We had storm damage, and we got one quote. I would like to, we're having problems getting a second and third quote on this. One problem is that Zimmer Roofing did the roof replacement, that we agreed for them to do that, and there's a question if we have another company in there to install the gutter, does that negate our roofing warranty? Which is about 10-year warranty, isn't it? 10 or 15. I think it was 15, actually. But anyhow, but I would be, it's the board's pleasure, I mean, we could accept this, or we can postpone and try to get some other quotes and see if it would actually negate the warranty.
What portion of that will the insurance cover?
This is, this didn't fall under the insurance.
I don't know why not. It's storm damage.
That was going to be my question, too.
Yeah.
Have they been notified?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason I know with Zimmer and everything else, the roof is actually laminated to the gutter itself. It actually goes over and it's laminated to the gutter right now. And when they've replaced that, that edge of the roof's got to be re-laminated back to the gutter because of the type of roof it has, there isn't that much pitch to it, so the water doesn't go back underneath.
Based on my question, I'd like to see a determination letter from the insurance company for rejection.
So, how about this? I would like to volunteer to get a couple of more quotes. I know a lot of roofer and gutter guys. I believe I can get a few more quotes, and if nothing else, at least to use it as leverage or check the pricing. So the linear foot pricing here is very expensive, right? It's approximately 92 feet. $6,500 is a lot of money, and I know the EPDM goes over top and gets welded, and there's probably term bar up there, so it is a big deal, but I don't know if it's a $6,500 big deal.
Let me ask you something, Chris. Is my comments off-base as far as trying to get the insurance company involved with this?
I don't believe so.
I didn't say the insurance company policy, but...
No, I think they, I believe they helped us with the EPDM portion.
Yeah.
When Zimmer did it initially.
Well, this is different here.
No, I'm following up on, I'm agreeing with you, and so perhaps it was overstated or overlooked initially. So, supplements are issued all the time by contractors against insurance carriers. I go through them every day. The people are always issuing supplements. So yeah, Mark, I think this is a two-phase operation.
Well, I would say, first of all, let's get the insurance company involved before we do anything else.
We're still in pricing.
Lance, was this the same storm that we did the claim from the roof on? Because we've had two or three wind events where that tree has come down in a couple pieces.
Yes. The last big storm that we had is when they had to come out and actually repair the roof in six, I think, six different spots.
Under the insurance claim?
I don't know if it was under the insurance claim or not. I don't know.
Okay. So maybe you can investigate.
Is this May? Is this that May storm?
Yeah.
Same one that came across the lake?
Two trees were laying against the building and we pulled the trees off.
Ran up, affected the colony, buildings?
No, that was a different storm, wasn't it?
I think that was a different, yeah.
Yeah, that was a different storm.
That was a different one.
I said, we've had two or three big storms, so I think we just need to look back and see what was included with that claim.
So, yeah.
We should be able to look up under Zimmer's when they've done the repair.
Yep.
Because they need to run it out.
So if you could check on some estimates?
I'll do the estimating portion.
Lance and I can check on the timing and coverage.
Coverage and the data loss, and whether or not we file the claim per the set event.
Correct.
Right?
Thank you, Chris. I was wondering if my comments are just being blown over for no reason whatsoever, other than to get something done here in the board.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Trustee Bouchard, I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
So is your motion to postpone it this time?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to postpone the Zimmer Roofing and Construction gutter replacement for $6,591 until next meeting.
Support.
Okay, yeah, motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have a firm proposal to buy some, purchase some equipment for the LG wastewater treatment plant on the Harson's Island. And we're very confident that this portion of the plant will, we're okay to purchase it. It will lock in a price, so it won't go up anymore, because this stuff is crazy going up. And it basically includes, as far as I know, everything except the SAF system, which will be approximately $275,000, and the greenhouse itself, that'd be $125,000, and then the headworks. I have John Monty here. If you have any questions, did that surprise?
Well, there are some additional expenses for the site, tanks.
Right.
In that foundation.
John, would you mind going to the podium?
Yeah, as I explained before, I mean, this doesn't include the installation, the cement work, and some other things, but this is all the stuff we're confident that we can order it now, because there's a pretty long wait on some of this stuff, and we can get the ball rolling. And we did have some questions, you know, they're willing to take, you know, 50% down. They assured us the warranty doesn't start until it's installed, and...
And they're willing to store it. And they're willing to store it in Zeeland.
Yep, they're going to store it for free, so.
So these are basically the pieces that need to be shipped to the site, right?
These are some of the pieces. There are some others that Artie had mentioned. By the way, John Monty, project control engineering, 2420 Point Tremble, Clay Township. Yes, these are some of the main components. Some of these have a long lead time. If you'll notice in here, the weeks for doing shop drawings as well as weeks for being able to deliver the product, some of this is like six to eight months, that could be, so we're trying to get a jump on that if possible, and this allows us to do it and lock in prices at the same time. A couple of the other pieces of equipment, we didn't want to intermix in this, because we've just received our draft permit from Eagle, and we just want to make sure that that gets finalized, that there's not a change that would require possibly a change to a piece of equipment. So these are, these are all solid items known that we can, that will go into the final plant, and, you know, some of the other things are just uncertain at this point, and what we maybe do at some point in time, if we get those confirmed, is come back and ask for some additional and get those pre-ordered as well. I think this negotiated out pretty well in the end with, we were very concerned about a warranty, storage, and things like that. We didn't want to buy something and the warranty run out before it ever went in, you know? So, all of that, I think, came together in here pretty well. And they're requiring 50% down at this point, and then 50%, the remaining 50%, when it's ready for shipment, which is fair.
That's fair, yeah.
I think.
$770 is the whole amount, so we only have to pay half of that.
For these items, yes, half right now.
And I mean, I'm all for it. I want to get this started and get this going for San Souci, but there's a lot of variables that we don't have approval for yet, right?
Variables, I'm sorry?
There's a lot of permits and Eagle things that we still don't have approval on, am I right?
That's correct. You are correct. We have draft permit for the discharge of the plant, and we have, which is either out for public notice right now, or should be. Same with the actual work on the plant site, the wetland work and stuff that we're doing there, filling floodplain, wetland, and all those items. That draft, or that 30-day notice should be out as well right now. That's what our environmental consultant told me about a week ago. So, I haven't seen the notice myself, but we're getting very close to having, when they send out these notices for public notice at that point, Eagle is satisfied that we fulfilled the requirements that they're looking for. And now, at this point, it's to send it out to the public to see if there's public comment. So, you know, could something affect any of those? I guess we don't know at this point.
But there's nothing else that we still have, a stumbling block with Eagle. Now it's just a...
Those are the two main ones, is the plant, wetland work that we're doing and floodplain, and then the actual discharge, when the plant has completed the discharge to the river.
And of course, we still need another $2 million, right? Is that in the bag? It's a $4 million project.
This is the $2 million to build the plant, and that's what we're working on right now.
But it won't be operational without the other $2 million, right? Because we've got a...
No, this, you know, we have to have a pipe going to San Souci. Then the other $2 million is for the rest of the collection system. Then the other two million is for the rest of the collection system.
Well, we have it all pretty much covered, brother.
We don't have the rest of the money, we don't have all the money to actually do the project, so we could get a certain point and then be stumbled if we don't get the rest of it. Okay.
John, respected engineer, working with PCE, somebody that works with our township closely, at this time, is it your recommendation that we go ahead and order this equipment?
It is.
So, then, board, I would say that we also did something similar with the fire trucks?
Yep.
Big purchase, right? We had to lock in some pricing. We forecasted it out, it was, what, that was a year build? I think so. Chief, wasn't that about a year build?
Yes, this last one, yeah.
Right, and there's been other examples.
Well, I think we also have to keep in mind that this two-million-dollar grant was for this plant, so it's...
Have to use for anything else.
Right, we would have to send the money back if we didn't create the plant, so.
So, the funding for the plant is secure?
Mm-hmm.
But we don't have all the money to finish it yet, that's all, but we're getting there.
Well, finish is a relative word, right?
Well, it's not...
Finish is a relative word.
Well, it's not gonna be operational if you don't have the drain that goes to the, because a plant sitting there is not hooked up to anything.
I think what you're talking about is expanding the collection system.
No, even, we don't have the money even to go to San Souci right now, to hook up to San Souci.
Well, we're not sure, we don't know all the costs yet. We don't know what the smack cost.
Well, we know it's two million, is what we've got, and seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand to PCE, seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand here, I heard a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, but that's for the whole collection system you're talking about with PCE, both phases.
Okay. Well, I'm anxious to get it started, so I'll take his recommendation.
All right, can I get a motion?
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the Harson's Island wastewater treatment plant, the firm equipment proposal, in the amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, and eighty-eight cents.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support.
Now, I'd like to be first in discussion. Because we're authorizing that, we're only releasing half of those funds now, right?
Yep.
Okay, but when we take possession, or when that invoice comes due, we will not have to petition our board again for the other half, right?
We're gonna pay for it, yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure that motion was correct.
We're approving this contract for me to sign.
Yep, that's what we just did.
Okay.
So, we have motion and support?
Yep, I support again.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Do we have a score? Yay! Tigers won! There's hope. All right, Wes, why didn't you stop us? All right, Fire Department new hire, part-time, Ozzy Kinisch, is it? Kinisch, okay.
I'd like to have permission from the Clay Township Board of Trustees to hire one new part-time firefighter, Ozzy Allen Kinch. Ozzy is a longtime resident of Harson's Island, graduated from Elginak High School in 2018. He's currently in the Army Reserve as a rank of E-five sergeant, and he will be discharged later this year. He also works, he currently works for Solvit Inc., and he's an IT hardware tech. Ozzy passed the interview and also the background check. Recommend him for hire.
Great. See, Ozzy, I ask everyone this question, I'm sure you do, I ask it, do you know how to swim?
I do know how to swim.
Okay, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. You're in hardware, computer hardware, I have a background in computers, too. And you're gonna be enrolled in the Fire One and Fire Two, right?
Yes, sir.
And is that in December?
Yep, that's in December. Ozzy does not have any fire experience, but he is a resident of the island.
Right.
And we need people on the island, and he's willing to step up. We will send him to Fire One, Fire Two in the fall, or in December.
December.
And then, next September, we'll be sending him to EMT class.
Awesome.
I'm sure he knows all the back canals and under the culverts and...
Probably some good huts.
Backyards. What do you do in the National Guard?
I'm a twelve Bravo Combat Engineer. I recently just got dual MOS, I'm also a twelve November, it's a horizontal engineer. I handle heavy equipment and demolitions. Been doing this for six years, and coming up on my six years, my contract, contract ends next month.
After I was discharged from the Air Force, I went into the Army National Guard a few years later, ninety-five Bravo.
Oh, right on.
You can tell them what that is.
Ah, ninety-five Bravo.
Military police.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's either police or...
Yeah, spent twelve years there.
Were you canines?
Pardon?
Well, did you have anything to do with canine units, or?
I'm sorry, couldn't you...
Dogs.
The canines.
No, I didn't, no, we didn't, I had very few canines back then.
Okay.
That was in combat, that was the ninety-five Bravo Combat MP.
Where were they based on? Where were they...
Well, we were in Light Guard Armory down on Eight Mile Road, and then I was transferred over to Selfridge.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ozzy?
We'll get to know each other real well.
I feel real well.
I had the ability to coach up some clubs and teams and watch Mr. Kinch as he worked his way through the high school, and I can tell you that he works very well in a team environment, works very well with others. Got an excellent work ethic, and he shows some excellent leadership traits. So, I'll be excited to make a recommendation for the Clay Township Fire Department new hire, part-time, Mr. Ozzy Kinch.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Support. Motion is support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of hiring Ozzy Kinch?
Close.
Kinch?
Yeah, Kinch.
Kinch.
Yeah, Kinch.
Hiring Ozzy Kinch, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, congratulations, Ozzy. All right, leads us to board member comments. Cindy?
All right, well, welcome aboard, Ozzy. Glad to have you on our team. Thank you very much for your service. Absentee ballots have gone out, so if you have requested one and you haven't received it, and you don't receive it by the end of the week, please call the office and let us know. They are out in the mail.
Hugh? John?
So, yeah, welcome aboard to Ozzy. Also, it looks like we're gonna have a good weekend, so hopefully people can get out and support our Sturgeon Fest this weekend.
That's right.
And go Tigers!
Yep, Maureen?
I just wanted to say that I know that I voted for the soil erosion permit at Elginak Sand and Supply, as Ms. Mertz states. However, I have made it clear to this board that I thought when we voted for that, we may have gotten some falsified information on the reporting, and asked the board to revisit it and revote, and was turned down there. Personally, I've sent an email to everyone on this board, letting them know that I do rescind my vote. I'm concerned about the sand that's leaving that pit. I feel that many on this board don't have the compassion for neighbors in protecting the people and the property of our township. What I see going on with the Klingeburgs, the state does not have jurisdiction over more than we do. We should be, there's no way that a pig farm should be within fifteen feet of your kitchen window, especially when the man has over eighty acres. And even on agricultural, I'm pretty sure it's seventy-five feet. So, we should be out there, we should be doing something, and I'm very upset that we're not. I don't understand the whole situation over there. There shouldn't be anyone digging within seventy-five feet of this landfill. However, they are digging right up next to it, and instead of addressing the person who's causing the contamination to come out, they're going after the landfill owner, and I just don't understand it. So, I apologize on behalf of my not being able to do anything for the people, and hopefully something happens soon. So, thank you for coming, everybody, and welcome fellow islander to the Fire Department.
Mark? Congratulations, Ozzy, and thank you for your service. We had a joint meeting, was it last weekend, or last week, last Wednesday, and we discussed ceiling heights as it comes to the height of buildings. I don't know if it was ever resolved, but I think we'll be doing follow-ups with that with the Building Commission. And the October meeting was canceled anyway, so that's it. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, the board doesn't always have to agree on everything, and we know that. We've gone through some difference of opinions, but today we did a couple of really, really important things. One, we unanimously agreed and approved for a school resource officer, and that's a very big deal for our community. So, I commend each and every one of my board members. Secondly, we approved the firm equipment proposal for Harson's Island wastewater treatment plant, which is a giant step forward, in my opinion, and a real win for the island. So, two very monumental approvals, in my opinion, today, and they were both voted unanimously by our board. So, I want to thank each and every one of you. I think those are a couple of really good decisions we made today. Lastly, we got a blood drive at the Elginak Lions Club Thursday, October 31st. That's Halloween from nine AM to three PM. So, if anybody feels like giving a little blood at the Elginak Lions Club, feel free between nine AM and three PM. That's all I have.
Yeah, Chris, if you don't, I'm gonna caption, I'm gonna jump on that for a minute. The Elginak Lions Club blood drive is the highest in the state for donating blood.
Really? Is it really? Very good, Mark.
Yes.
Thank you for that information.
Kristi?
I just want to say I'm super proud of the kids that are coming out of Elginak that are sticking around or furthering their education and then coming back and giving back to their community. I think that's amazing, and I'm really proud.
We're gonna have two more next week, or next meeting, new hires, and another one from the island, Donovan DeWicky, so, thank you. Ozzy, congrats. If you need anything, you know, let us know, we want you to be successful, okay?
Really, thank you.
So, let us know. Lots of stuff going on, that's for sure. To answer your question about Eagle, Maureen, Eagle gave the landfill permission, I told you this in an email, but you keep on bringing it up, they gave them permission to dig right along that property line, to line it with clay, to protect their own property. Eagle gave them permission to do that.
We have ordinances within seventy-five feet, they're not supposed to dig.
Eagle gave them permission to do that.
It was already done.
And I'm just telling you...
Well, it was already done when they got the permission, so there was no other choice.
This is my turn, and you're worried about contamination, you know, of the sand. I was there, Eagle had at least ten people running around everywhere on the sand pit, they're testing everything, and at the landfill, they had drones, and I don't know exactly what they came up with, I forwarded you the letter, but they said, they claimed that there was contamination, two types of contamination, coming from the landfill. We have a meeting this week when they're gonna elaborate, that's all I know, and they said, and our department did go on the sand pit, and they, I think they gave them two things that they had to comply with, and I think one of them is to move one of the pastures further away from the Klingeburgs, I think. I don't know specifically, but that's what I'm told, and hopefully that will be done.
We should do it.
They, our M-DART has jurisdiction over it, and I think they're gonna make a move there, move it.
The point is, is there's too many houses within the...
Anything else, Artie? Anything else, Artie?
Please, it's M-DART's jurisdiction, not Clay Township. I asked, I asked M-DART, is this intense farming? And they said, no, it's not. You can shake my, because they're not breaking the ordinance, it's not intense. And so, anyhow, that's it. I mean, it's in the state officials' hands. Sturgeon Fest, I'm really looking way forward to that. They did change it from night fishing to day fishing, and I'm looking forward to the kids' games and everything else, it's gonna be a great day. And if you wanna come and pet a live sturgeon, come on over, we'll have one or two in the tank. And be careful of all the Halloween events, there's a lot of kids running around and everything else, and it's a fun time of year, but be careful of everyone running around. Other than that, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, thank you. All in favor, aye, aye. Go Tigers!